Good evening. It's now six o'clock. My name is Greg Ferris and President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and I hereby call the Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. I do certify our quorum as present that the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. These monthly meetings are open to the public, although the meetings or public comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Thank you guys again for coming tonight. At this time, we're going to take item 13 out of order, and the board will convene into closed session. So, we will report back to open session then by seven o'clock. Well, good evening. It is now seven o'clock, and we will call this meeting to order and reconvene back into regular open session. We'll move on to item 3A, which is our welcome introduction and our invocation. We are pleased and honored to have with us tonight Shawn DeTurding. He serves as pastor of Water of Life Lutheran Church of Forney to lead our invocation. He received his undergraduate degree in education from Wichita State University and received his Masters of Divinity degree 2003 from Concordia Seminary in St. Louis, Missouri. Shawn and his bride Patricia are the parents of seven children ages seven to 21. The Reverend enjoys gardening and is also a beekeeper. The Water of Life Church has recently helped sponsor students during the annual Christmas Angel program. They're also a valuable partner in the Backpack Program to help students in need along with supporting Henderson Elementary as their adoptive partners. We're very thankful for the Reverend and Water of Life Church to be part of our Forney family. So, if you would, rise as he comes forward to lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, children are a gift from you. We thank you and praise your holy name for such gifts. May we, as parents, as teachers, as administrators, all give praise and honor and glory to you because of that. And may we, by the guidance of the Holy Spirit, also be good stewards of raising the children in the homes, in the community, and in our great nation as well. Lord, tonight, be with us as we celebrate different types of recognitions that are happening this evening. Lord, we give all honor and glory to you. And Lord, even though we all fall short of the glory of God, we praise your holy name for the blood of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord, for our life, for our salvation. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Well, we thank you all for coming tonight, and we know you didn't all come to see us. So, we will get right into the recognitions. We're going to start off with our Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Laurie Branch. She's the principal of Henderson Elementary. Introduce our Student of the Month, and then they will lead us in our pledges.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Terry, and Board of Trustees, for allowing me to recognize the Elementary Student of the Month. It is with great pleasure that I present to you a Henderson second grader Eva Ojo. Eva is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Ojo and siblings Evan and Favor and a little brother Levi on the way. Eva likes to play soccer and swing outside. She enjoys making friends with people she does not know. Her favorite subject is math, and she participates in our math club after school this semester. Eva wants to be a nurse like her mom when she grows up. She wants to be able to help people when they are sick and show them kindness when they do not feel well. Eva's teacher stated that Eva is always respectful and full of joy. She's eager to participate in class and helpful with her peers. Most recently, Eva stood up for another student on the bus that was being picked on. She continued to try to help the other student by interjecting herself, trying to trade seats with the other students to get distance between the two, and then she brought forth the information and details the following day to administrators to try and get help. Harold Kushner says, "Do things for people not because of who they are or the things they have done, but because of who you are." Eva knew the right thing to do, and that was to help the other student in need. Eva has been raised to be kind to others, and that is the kindness in just who Eva is. In a world where Eva could be anything, she wants to be in occupation because her goal is to show kindness. I can't wait to see all the ways Eva continues to make this world a better place. It's with great honor that I recognize our Elementary Student of the Month, Eva Ojo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, then, we're going to move on to item four, Acceptance of Donations. And we'd like to ask Ms. Susan Johnson if she would step to the podium to share about a donation for Griffin Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. President and fellow Board members, Dr. Terry. We are happy to have two schools here with us this evening along with their PTO representatives for your consideration of a donation this evening. The first school we're bringing up is Griffin Elementary, and Ms. Christy Crabtree is the principal there.
Come here. Did you want to speak to the amount of the donation?
Yes, we are accepting a donation of $12,000 from our PTO, which is fantastic since this is our first year at Griffin and our first PTO. So, thank you, PTO, for donating $12,000 to Griffin Elementary.[480.12][480.12](Applause)
Mr. Coker, if you want to wait a second.
Hang on one second.
Because the size of that donation, we do have guidelines. Because such a large donation, as a board, we have to vote to accept that donation. They usually pass, but go spare with me, Ms. Crabtree.[500.22][500.22](Laughter) They may decide to send it to some other campus. I don't know. You just never know.[505.19][505.19](Laughter) Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion to accept the donation as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Crabtree, you're good to go.[522.32][522.32](Laughter)[528.32][528.32](Applause) Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. We have a second school this evening. Ms. Nancy McElroy is here. She is going to present for Johnson Elementary, has a few words to say about that.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to make this presentation tonight. Our Johnson PTO, they just do a tremendous job for our campus, and some of the things that they've done are they've adopted some grants for teachers. They always adopt Johnson Panthers at Christmas time as well, so they're just a fabulous group for us. We've had some fun events on campus already this year, so we thank them very much for that, and we appreciate their support with helping us with our fundraising. At this time, I'd like to present a donation from the Johnson PTO in the amount of $12,215 to Johnson Elementary for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion to accept the donation as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. May I have a second? Ms. Dobbs? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Another $12,000. That's awesome. You'll step over for a picture, please.[621.04][621.04](Applause) While they're getting ready, I'll say thank you to all you parents and supporters out there, because it's all of you guys that make that possible. So, thank you as you continue to support our campuses. Thank you, ladies. Moving on then to recognitions, we'll move into our student recognitions. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Neil Weaver, who is our athletic director. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, and guests. It's always a blessing and a privilege for me to have an opportunity to recognize and help celebrate some of our outstanding young men and women in our fall sports who have been recognized themselves by the Texas High School Coaches Association as Academic All-State. These seniors have got to be nominated by their head coach. They've got to be members in good standing and of good moral character, and they've got to have an overall grade point average of 92 or above, beginning with their ninth grade coursework. And then, as they're nominated, the THSCA considers each student's GPA, class rank, and SAT and ACT score, and the students are given points based on those criteria. So, there are a lot of pieces that go into this. All these students are varsity athletes and are great students. Beginning with Forney High School, represented here by head coach Sandy Cook, Forney High Cross Country. These young ladies are Ms. Marissa Biss and Emma Denning.[727.79][727.79](Applause) Moving to Forney High School volleyball, Coach Michelle Idol's unable to be with us tonight, so Nikki Carroll is standing in. Our Forney High School volleyball academic all-state recipients, Kyler Sanders and Corinne And rounding out our fall sports at Forney High School, our football players and athletic trainers, represented here with Coach Jeff Fleener and head athletic trainer Richard English. We'll go through this list of young men, starting with honorable mention, award winners Cameron Kate, Kayden Cross, Charles Nielsen, Nick Newville, Ja'Kale Watson, and Jake White. Our second team, award winners Gavin Doctor, Andrew Gafford, Josh Stevens, and Stephen Thrasher. First team, academic all-state Alexis Newman. And elite team, academic all-state, but I do want to point out that to make an elite team, in all the categories that I mentioned before, a student athlete has to have a near-perfect Moving over to North Forney High School, our fall sports, beginning with cross country. And here to recognize our students also is cross country head coach Jeremy Moore. Honorable mention, Texas High School Coaches Association academic all-state Elizabeth Chavez, Jaleela Harris, and Evelyn Karaha. And second team, Ms. Alyssa Hood.[892.69][892.69](Applause) North Forney High School volleyball, head coach Holly Perkins. And honorable mention, award winners Taylee Wells and Haley Acosta. Second team, Carson Hunter. And first team, Sofia Juarez.[913.23][913.23](Applause) And finally, with football and our athletic trainers, head coach Eric Lester and athletic trainers Holly Abshire and Brittany Cortez are with us tonight. Honorable mention, and these are double academic all-state Haley Acosta and Jaleela Harris, Mr. William Bressi, Kenny Cox, Jaden Griffin, Michael Uwokway.
Okay, moving on to item four, North Forney High School percussion. This time, Mario Luna will come to the podium. Mr. Luna is our fine arts director. Forgive me for not introducing you properly.
Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, board, thanks for your time. Yes, we do have North Forney High School percussion here. Eight years ago, when I got into this role, I was hoping at some point we have a performing group that would receive an honor at the state level, and North Forney here knocked out of the park and not did state, did national, and technically international. The invitation to perform at the National Midwest, sorry, sorry, is among the most elite for percussion groups in the nation, as only two groups were selected. These kids performed in Chicago at the Midwest, performance took place Friday, the last week of school. Just, I mean, if you were there, I mean, I know you weren't there, but some moms and dads were, I were. I mean, it was just, I don't even know the words. I mean, it was so great. It was just, it was just awesome, awesome, awesome. A few folks that I would like to recognize is Mr. Jung. If you can just kind of wait for your time, support, help with pictures. He was there. He flew in and, you know, observed and was there with us and then flew back. Mr. Jacoi, where you at? Raise your hand. Our assistant band director at North Forney, Ms. Turner. Thank you for your support on this trip. Ms. Roxanne, there's a parent in the room way back there. She, from what I could kind of see, I mean, she was the support on this trip. I mean, she took care of all the meals and bus drivers and all this awesome stuff. Mr. Ferguson is our percussion instructor at North Forney, but he is not feeling well tonight, so he's not here. And then, we have the leader of this group, Mr. Gist. So, I'm going to invite him up here to introduce the names of these students, because they're his students, and then I've got, and one more thing to say right after this, so.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. Good evening, Dr. Terry, Board of Trustees. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to honor these students tonight. We're so excited to be here and acknowledge the Forney Fine Arts. I want to say thank you to each of you and your support. This is a very special group of students, and we had a very special event last month, and it doesn't happen everywhere, and it happens with support from you guys. So, we really do appreciate that. I'm going to go down, down the row. Ready? All right. First is Jolie Barnes.[1196.91][1196.91](Applause) We have Ashley Beza Castillo, Alexa Carlos, Mia Corizio, Ryan Coldarn, James Cordova, Tomas Espinoza, Stephanie Funk, Jared Geis, Elena Griffiths, Brendan Huntress, Valerie Justice, Tristan Capadia, Karen Martin, Raul Martin, Christian Morgan, Gavin Riddle, Dev Darceen, Rachel Traynor, Dawson Welch, and Emily Wells.[1268.08][1268.08](Applause)
So, I believe we're going to take a picture here, so they'll kind of squeeze in. While they're taking this picture, we got sent this email the Monday after we returned, and it came from a director in California. So, let me just read this real quick while they take this picture. "I attended a North Forney's performance at Midwest and just would like to let you know how profound of an impact it had on me. Your students played so wonderful and in a way that I've never heard before from high school students. Of all your performances I watched at this convention, yours was easily the most inspiring to me. Thank you for sharing your students' musicality with me and so many others. In my first few years as a percussion teacher, this performance was truly energized me to guide my own students to the next level of teaching." So, this came from a music educator in California. So, I've got one more thing for Mr. Gist, and I think we're going to take our picture. All right? Oh, you did.[1352.65][1352.65](Laughter) Here you go. So...
This is going into his office. This is the photo from the event.
Congratulations again, and thank you all for taking time to be here, and parents, thank you for coming tonight. Our next item is 5B, School Board Recognition. This time, I'll turn the podium back over to Ms. Susan Johnson and board, if you would be making your way down here to the front, please.
If y'all could just stand in front of your place, that would be great. Well, we have this very important recognition, and everyone's leaving. Forney ISD joins 1,025 school districts across Texas to celebrate January as School Board Recognition Month. Our school board members are volunteers, meaning non-paid, who shoulder critical responsibilities, but while being focused on the future of success of our children. They give up their time and their talents voluntarily to lead our school district. Our Forney ISD trustees include Ms. Becky Dobbs, Secretary Christopher Andrews, Vice President Chad Johnson, President Greg Ferris. I'm sorry. Who was after? We had Chad Johnson, so we'll just, yeah, hold a space for Chad. Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then, we have President Greg Ferris. We have Ms. Barbara Jo Green. And Mr. Scott Regan. So, trustees, we would like for you to take the poster that the students have there. Take a look at that, and I want to tell you that you are joined this evening by students across all of our campuses who have been selected to help honor you this evening. This year's national theme is Rising Above. There is no question that the last two years have been exceptionally difficult for public schools and school boards in particular. Yet, you have managed to lead our organization through it all. Always supportive, always strong, you continue to demonstrate what it means to be a leader in our community. We have these commemorative posters and other recognition items from our students. Our agriculture and robotics students have custom engraved Forney ISD cutting boards for you, and our floral design students have created the flower arrangements this evening. Thank you for all you do, and at this time, we would like to get a group picture with
While everyone's making their way back to their seats, those in the audience, I'm not sure you know, but our school board members don't get a big paycheck for this job. They get nothing. They get just their volunteerism, their time, and I've just got to, if it's okay, say just a couple of words about this group. They are by far the best in the state of Texas, and we are so blessed to have them leading this school district. We are so thankful for the hearts of each of them, for our kids, and for our staff. So, thank you to all of our school board one more time. We appreciate you.[1718.23][1718.23](Applause)
The board, if you would, stay down here. We've got a couple more pictures. Next, moving on to staff recognition, I would like to turn the podium over to Chief Sanders, Forney ISD Chief of Police.
Mr. Ferris, thank you very much. Dr. Terry, distinguished board, tonight I have the utmost honor of introducing four of our newest Forney ISD police officers to you tonight. So, if y'all would step forward for me. So, in front of you have the four newest officers that now work for the Forney ISD Police Department. From left to right, we have Alex Sanchez.[1764.63][1764.63](Applause) Stafford Williams. Thelma Perkins-Smith.[1776.63][1776.63](Applause) And Joe Frank Thomas. So, I counted all their years up, and you have over 50 years' experience in front of you today. So, I tried to bring the best of the best to the district, and we're going to, as we grow, we're going to continue to do so, but these people are one of the, they're salt of the earth. But these people are one of the, they're salt-of-the-earth people. They have, absolutely have protection is number one because our faculty, staff, students, the whole entire district is the utmost important to us. But they're also mentors and educators. So they're special people and I hired them to be special. So with that being said, we're not gonna spend any more time on me bragging about them because I can do that all day long. If you'll take a look at me, we're gonna do the official ceremonial swearing-in ceremony. Folks, they've already been sworn in, but we're doing it in front of everybody because this means a lot to us as an agency to be able to swear them into the district and be part of the Fornie family. So if you would, raise your right hand in front of me and please repeat after me. I know you're gonna smile at me. All right, so in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Police Officer of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, this is important, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. What I didn't mention is that they're supposed to do a five-minute presentation in front of everybody and that thankfully has not happened.
Board, we're not finished. Board, if you would come back down, we're not finished. Moving on to next staff recognition. At this time, I turn to Ms. Susan Johnson for a very special recognition for this large audience.
Dr. Terry, if you would please take the floor. Fornie ISD Superintendent Dr. Justin Terry has been selected as the 2021 Superintendent to Watch by the National School Public Relations Association. Dr. Terry joins just 18 other superintendents across the nation and only three in Texas who were selected for this honor. Honories must have fewer than five years of experience as a superintendent and must demonstrate dynamic, fast-paced leadership with strong communication at its core. INSPIRA only selects these honories for their innovative and effective use of technology to engage and inform the school community, for their dynamic, fast-paced leadership, fast-paced leadership, with strong communication at its core, and efforts to expand two-way communication and outreach efforts. We all know that Dr. Terry fully embraces his role in the Fornie family. He is a visionary, a strong communicator, a man of integrity, a motivator, and a genuine leader who desires to positively impact our students and community. Dr. Terry, it's an honor for us to all be a part of this national recognition and you know that your Fornie family stands behind you all the way. In addition to your pretty certificate there, we have, the Fornie family would like to acknowledge you as a bright light for FISD. This sign is not going to your house because we just don't think enough people see it there. So we are going to hang this in your office and we just want you to know how much we appreciate you and thank you so much on behalf of the Fornie family.
Thank you very much. We're gonna take five-minute recess here to kinda get reset and we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you. Okay, it's now 7:40. We'll continue with our meeting here, starting with our reports and 7A Monthly Financial Report. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we're here to talk about the financial results for the month ending November 2021. Just to start with, on the general fund, we had year-to-date revenues collected of $40.8 million and this was 32% of the amount estimated, which prior year, we had 29% recognized at the same point in time. So we're a little ahead of schedule as far as revenue recognition, so we're in pretty good shape. Moving on to the general fund expenditures, year-to-date expenses was $57.7 million, or 41% of the amount appropriated. In prior year, at this same point in time, we had 39% expended. So again, we're in pretty good shape there, within the margin of error of where we'd be this time of year. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue collected was $2.2 million. As I reported last month, the September and October federal reimbursement, we actually did receive it this month and that $2.2 million represents 42% of the amount of the estimated revenue budget. We did serve 121,000 meals this past month, or in fact, month of November, excuse me, and then we had all-of-cart sales of 126,000. Again, like in the prior year, we had 13% recognized at the same point in time. And again, we've talked about this several times, but we served significantly fewer meals last year because of a lot of our kids stayed at home and did virtual school. So tracking along really good with revenue. Feel like, you know, we're pretty far actually ahead of schedule, I think, in collecting what we had estimated for the entire year. Feel like we'll actually probably run a surplus this year. Moving on to expenditures in the food service budget, we had $22.1 million expended and that was 39% of the amount appropriated. And again, comparing to the prior year, we had 29%, serving significantly more meals, so our food cost is higher, which is no surprise there. But again, like I said, I fully expected us to have a surplus in the general, in the food service fund at the end of the year. And this will allow us to reimburse the district for administrative costs through that indirect cost reimbursement that we've done every year prior to last year. So in really good shape at this point in time, food service program. Moving on to debt service, year-to-date revenues collected was $2.2 million. We started getting into heavy tax collections months in the month of November, December, January. So that's around 7% right now, which, you know, it's not a lot, but in December and January, we'll get the bulk of our collections. Last year at this time, we were at 4% collected. So pretty well where we expect to be at this time of year, actually slightly a little ahead of where we were last year. And then finally, on the expenditures in the debt service fund, we had the year-to-date was $20.9 million. We've got February, we'll have our interest payment for our debt service bonded debt that we have outstanding and that'll expend pretty much everything that we had appropriated in the debt service program. That represents about 69% thus far. Last year, we were at 73% expended. So again, we're tracking right along where we expect to be this time of year. And finally, the cash and investments on hand at the end of November in the general fund, food service, debt service, and capital project funds was $134 million and the bulk of that was in our capital project funds to help cash flow the construction projects that we have going on right now. So that's the financial report. If there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Appreciate that. Moving on to 7B then, it's Board Self-Evaluation. Would like to report, this board strives to do self-evaluation every year. They do a great job of that. We have 100% board and I wouldn't serve with anybody else. I appreciate them very much. They've all completed the required training. They all take time out of their personal lives to attend the Tasby Annual Convention and they focus on the district-wide goals that we have set forth before us and always focus on that and don't get distracted by all of the complications of the world we've had the past couple of years. So I appreciate you guys and all the efforts you give to keep us in check with one another. So thank you very much. Let's move on then to Item C, Master Planning Update. Ms. Kim Morzak, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board. I'll actually ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction to come up and give you guys an update. I will tell you one thing you're not gonna see in his report tonight are the baseball softball fields. That's because we have a certificate of occupancy for Fornie High School. Our kids are practicing, they started the day we got back. We also are on the baseball softball fields at North Fornie. The fields are done. They're beautiful. It looks awesome, both locations. Still a lot of construction over at North Fornie, as you know, and he'll talk about that, but our kids are practicing on the fields in both sides of town. So you won't see that here happily because they're done. So Jeff?
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good to be with you again. As always, I'll run through this report pretty quick. I think we've got four projects on here and that'll start growing here pretty quickly. First one that we have is Johnson Elementary School. Johnson and Willet are both going along real well. Johnson's just a tad in front of Willet. Our superintendents on those jobs are actually having a race to see which one finishes first. So that's kinda good in-house competition that we have going on. But Johnson, the different areas are in different states of completion, but we're working our way around the building. In some of the areas, we're actually gonna start painting here in a couple of weeks on the inside of Johnson and then probably by first of February on Willet. So it's all coming along real good. The storm shelters at both campuses are erected and have the roofs on them. So we'll start finishing those out and getting the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing going in those areas as well. As far as the exterior goes, most of the paving around the schools is complete. I think the only thing that we have left to do at Johnson from a paving standpoint is just the connection, the emergency connection out to 548. So that'll be coming along. They've got the box culverts in on that, so we'll be able to move forward with getting that paving put in as well. This is just some pictures of Willet, the stages that it's in. The North Fornie Fieldhouse project, as Ms. Morzak mentioned, the fields are usable at this point. We've got a little bit of finishing touches to put on the bleachers and canopies and some of those areas around the fields. The track is in process of being replaced around the football field. That'll be completed here within the next 15 or 20 days, I believe. The interior of the fieldhouse is coming along real well. We're putting finishing touches on that. Probably will be having punch lists in that building toward the first, second week in February, so that one will be finishing up as well. The aquatic center is coming along. I would like to say it's coming along as good as the other ones, but it's kind of a slow process. They have started erecting the pool enclosure structures. You can see down in the lower left-hand corner there, that's being erected as it's being delivered. Once they get it all erected, then they'll start putting the panels on it, the translucent panels and glazing. The upper right-hand corner, you can see the support building. That's where the lobby, restrooms, storage areas, those kinda things will be that'll serve the aquatic center. And in the lower right-hand corner, you can see the pool is actually there. You see the plywood around it. That plywood is actually protecting the stainless steel panels that create the wall of the pool. Once we get the enclosure done, then the pool contractor will come back in, pull all that plywood out and put PVC liner in the pool and then we'll put water in it. That is all I have on the construction update. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping us on track. Appreciate you. Moving on to Item 7D, Semi-Annual Update. Dr. Weber.
Mr. Ferris and School Board and Dr. Terry, I want you to know that we've been very busy the last six months and so this is a bit of a lengthy update with our video, but it just shows a fraction of what we've done. And Dr. Terry leads our incredible group of leaders and we just wanna share some of the highlights of what's occurred in the last few months. Without further ado, I'll see if I can get our video to advance.
Happy New Year. As we move into 2022, it's time to take a look back at what we've accomplished over the last six months. This past summer, our organization chart expanded from four circles into seven. It's easy to see that Fornie ISD is growing. This means our red circle, or human services, is enrolling new students every day and hiring new staff too. While our human services initiatives support Board Goal Number One, to provide opportunities and prepare for the future, they also align with Board Goal Number Three, that we will foster a culture of excellence that builds positive relationships and empowers our diverse population to achieve lifelong successes. Fornie ISD Health Services is truly honored and excited to be one of the first school districts in the state and first in the county to offer COVID vaccines to all of our aged five through 11-year-old students. We've also become a Texas vaccine-for-childen provider and will be able to help families in need of required immunizations for school enrollment to receive what they need. Fornie ISD is committed to providing all students with a safe and nurturing learning environment. We currently have multiple resources and forms of communications in place to assist families in discussing or reporting any concerns, including experiences with bullying, harassment, and threats. Our Student Services Department has created a district website designed to serve as a valuable online resource for students, educators, and families. The Fornie ISD Comprehensive Safety and Wellness Plan encompasses a multi-tiered approach to meet the safety and security needs of our students and staff. Capturing kids' hearts, anonymous alerts, smart tag, ID badges, an anti-bullying prevention program, and a threat assessment management system, along with various safety task force committees are just a few of the strategies used. The district also utilizes student service liaisons, campus security officers, and a crosswalk monitor as added layers of safety. The Culture of Excellence Design Team and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee are both ongoing efforts to be proactive in planning and collaboratively advocating and supporting diversity, equity, inclusion in our school community. Our Human Resources Team hosted the first-ever summer job fair to help fill vacancies that existed in July and attended a job fair hosted for Fornie Economic Development Council. Our Fornie ISD athletic teams are always striving for the state playoffs and this was evidence across the district this fall. In addition, our middle school teams also saw lots of success this season. The Athletic Department was also able to recognize some of our outstanding coaches each month that are nominated by their peers for this amazing award. Our yellow circle is our Communications and Engagement Team that includes our Advertising, Marketing, Communications, and Business and Community Partnerships Team. Their work aligns with Board Goals Number Three and Four. We will develop school, family, and community partnerships that expand opportunities for all. Fornie ISD's convocation welcomed 1,800 staff members at Citibank Stadium with an inspirational message from John O'Leary. This year's theme, Master Builder, was a nod to building blocks as a reminder of all the intricate parts that we each play at a school district. When strategically built together, the sum of these parts form to support and inspire our student's success. As a Fornie family, we are committed to helping each other build an exceptional place to learn, to teach, and to work. Our back-to-school community welcome included several businesses and organizations that helped us welcome students to school on August 16th with chalk artwork and committees at each campus. This is always an exciting event as we set the positive start of the school year. Pack the Pantry was held October 4th through November 3rd. The annual event to help our local Fornie food pantry was another huge success. Campuses and central administration collected more than 28,000 donated food items. This year, we expanded the fund by working with our Office of Engagement to encourage a construction of the items at the campuses. Our talented students once again blew us away with their artwork for our third year. Our talented students once again blew us away with their artwork for our Third Annual Christmas Card Contest. Students in grades pre-K through 12th grade were encouraged to participate through their campus's Fine Arts Program. The theme of Merry and Bright included a total of 38 finalists submitted by each campus for voting. The winners were announced at the December Board Meeting. Each winner and schoolward member was provided with printed holiday cards to share their talent with family and friends. Our Forney Family Christmas Wishes, in coordination with the Forney Lions Club, community churches, organizations, businesses, and our Forney ISD teachers and staff, provided almost 800 students with holiday hope. Volunteers are essential in supporting our students and staff at all levels. As a joint effort with the Human Resource Department, Forney ISD has implemented a new volunteer program called Volunteer Movement, or BOMO. This program allows the district to effectively conduct background checks and schedule events for volunteers to sign up. As of December, our district had created 237 service opportunities, 1,494 volunteer hours completed. This data calculates to over $42,000 of an economic impact value added to the district by our volunteers. This year, Forney ISD has seven district-wide sponsors who support the district with their advertising dollars. Smoothie King, Whataburger, Gallagher Construction, Raising Canes, Farm Bureau, Infinity Texas Air, and Intex Electric. We are currently managing 25 local businesses and organizations with paid advertising with 16 digital marquees in front of our campuses and administration building. Forney ISD provides opportunities for district and campus announcements as well as additional advertising options for our supporters. We love showcasing our students and keeping the community up to date with Forney ISD by creating attention-grabbing videos for all to enjoy. Check out our district videos created this fall on our YouTube channel and also on our social media channels. In addition to updating our website, we've also added new social media channels. In addition to Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, our district is now on the Nextdoor app, and we're about to make the leap into TikTok. Dr. Terry has been selected as the 2021 Superintendent to Watch by the National School Public Relations Association, or INSPIRA. He joins its 19 other superintendents nationwide who were selected for the honor and recognition of their innovative and effective use of technology to engage and inform the school community and to expand two-way communication and outreach efforts. Honorrees must have fewer than five years of experience as a superintendent and must demonstrate dynamic, fast-paced leadership with strong communication at its core. Our light blue circle, or Safety and Security, is our Forney ISD Police Department, Security and Emergency Operations Teams, working toward Board Goal Number One for a sound and safe learning environment. Officer Smith resumed her campus role as well as adding to her duties as our district's Emergency Management Specialist. She's working with the district and campus leaders to update the district's Emergency Operations Plan and assisting campuses on their plans as well. The Forney ISD Police Department helped to conduct approximately 61 safety drills this school year as well as hosting quarterly safety task force meetings. The Police Department conducted scenario-based training for campus administrators over the summer with an emphasis on the standard response protocols and drills. We continue to grow to fit the needs of the district and community and have hired four new officers since beginning of the school year for an increased presence on campuses. We are pleased to welcome Alex Sanchez, Stafford Williams, Joe Frank Thomas, and Thelma Perkins-Smith to the Forney family. The Police Department, in conjunction with Kaufman County Precinct Two Judge Amy Tarnow, had developed a summons program for assaultive behaviors occurring on campus. The program has been successful in deterring campus incidents. Part of our role as police officers within the district is to be a mentor and educator to our students. Each of our campus officers are required to conduct monthly educational presentations at their assigned campuses. As of today, we have conducted 27 campus presentations. We have added a layer to our anonymous alerts by joining Crime Stoppers as a secondary means for reporting incidents within our district. Our department is making a direct impact in the community because of the way we lead in developing this organization. Our orange circle, or Learner Services, aligns with just about all of our board goals, but certainly with Number Two. We will design and implement an innovative curriculum that meets the academic, social, emotional, and future-ready skills for all learners. This year, we welcomed more than 225 teachers to Forney ISD. Seven different campuses opened their doors to host these new employees for reading academies, math academies, and differentiated instruction training. Due to the nationwide teacher shortage, the Forney Academy to Certified Teachers, or FAT, was created to train and prepare teachers for immediate and future teaching positions within Forney ISD. Candidates will gain job-embedded training and pursue the completion of their bachelor's degree and teacher certification with newly developed partnerships between Forney ISD, TeachWorthy, and Indiana Westland University. The Forney ISD Instructional Coaching Model was rolled out at all elementary, intermediate, and middle school campuses. The campus learning specialists, along with the principal, are providing layers of instructional support for all teachers in Forney ISD. This support targets teacher retention, campus climate and culture, student achievement, and professional development by providing individualized instructional coaching sessions, cohort-style professional development, as well as mentor-mentee focus groups. The Sped Department hosted a Sped Parent Resources Fair at Forney High School. This provided Sped students and their families with a variety of opportunities to learn about community resources available to assist them, as well as some training on related topics. Next Step, our Special Education Transition Program, classes at North Forney High School and Forney High School, are working together to provide a wider range of recreational and vocational opportunities for students, including having a small business of selling brownies and hot sauce. In preparation for TEA, Reading, and Math Academies, Forney ISD provided summer professional development to all pre-K teachers and administrators. The three-day Forney ISD Reading Academy and two-day Math Academy provided teachers with research-based instructional practices and resources. We have launched a new GT and Advanced Academics Teacher Resources website. Resources are organized by grade level and subject area, including a teacher tip of the week that goes out in the Weekly Voice. Teachers also have quick access to professional development directly supporting GT training. STEAM camps returned with a bang in the summer of 2021. We offered 11 different camps in 38 separate sessions and hosted almost 1,000 student campers. Plans have already begun for offering after-school camps in the spring, and the summer of 2022 promises to be the biggest STEAM camp ever. Ronwyn Vaughn continues to serve our K4 GT students, including sending out a newsletter to almost 200 parents. A GT Parent Points Facebook page was also created to share curated articles, videos, and other articles to be used as a resource for parents with students in GT. With the Great Reset of Teach and Brain-Based Instruction, a new website was created with instructional resources, video tutorials, and teacher tips for each of the 10 brain-based practices. Each quarter, a few individual practices are highlighted in line with our continued differentiated instruction trainings. More than 400 secondary teachers attended one of seven differentiated instruction two-day trainings. The collaboration was exponential as theory and practicality merged for classroom implementation. Great conversations lead to differentiated lessons and activities for student engagement. Our Fine Arts Programs have had a very successful fall as well. From performances to awards, and elementary to secondary, band, cheer, theater, dance, art, and choir have all been very busy and have represented Forney ISD well in all that Our purple circle, or Operations, includes Technology, Library and Media Services, Facilities and Maintenance, Construction, Custodial, and Food Services. Their work aligns with Board Goal Number One, providing a sound, safe, and efficient learning environment, but also Board Goal Number Two, in equipping our students with the technology to enhance their future-ready skills. Last spring, the Board approved the purchase of over 1,000 new desktop PCs. This summer, we completed the deployment of new desktops to every Forney ISD classroom. During the fall semester, remote conferencing served over 750 students. This program afforded students the opportunity for short-term remote instruction. Our Forney ISD libraries, or HUBs, are in full swing, implementing curriculum for digital citizenship, coding, maker spaces, library lessons, databases, and much more. This year, we have started a high school virtual academy cohort to prepare teachers for future virtual academies. We have 20 teachers in various subjects developing lessons based on best practices for virtual learning. We opened three new campuses this year with the addition of Griffin, Rhodes, and Jackson. We're on track to open the expansions at North Forney and Forney High School Athletics' second semester and Willett Elementary next school year. In addition, the new Johnson Elementary will open fall of 2022 and is currently on schedule. We break ground on the OC this month. Save the date for January 18th. Our green circle, which is Financial Services, aligns with Board Goal Number One, that we will have a sound, safe, and efficient learning organization that supports learning, provides opportunities, and prepares for the future. For the seventh straight year, Forney ISD has received an A for Superior Achievement under the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or FIRST. The Superior Achievement Rating is the state's highest rating a school district can receive, demonstrating the quality of Forney ISD's financial management and reporting system. The district's auditor presented an unmodified opinion on the accuracy of our financial information in the October Board Meeting. This is the highest level of assurance an independent auditor will issue after reviewing financial data. The district's fund balance, after allowance for capital expenditures and future debt service payments, was $31.8 million, or 3.6 months of operating expenses, further demonstrating the strong financial position of the district. The district issued bonds totaling $67.3 million in August 2021 to complete the construction of Johnson Elementary and Willett Elementary. The district's strong financial position, as well as the favorable market conditions, allowed the district to borrow these funds at an interest rate of only 2.2%. The district also refinanced $24.2 million in outstanding debt in August 2021, saving the district $6.6 million in future interest payments. The district also paid off other existing debt earlier that was scheduled, saving the district an additional $6.3 million in future interest expenses. Our blue circle, or Innovation and Information, now consists of our Counseling Team, College Career Military Readiness, Technical Education, Student Information, and our newest department, the Office of Engagement. Their work aligns heavily with Board Goals One, Two, and Three, focusing on providing opportunities for all students, implementing an innovative curriculum, and building positive relationships. Our new Office of Engagement hosted our first-ever FAMFest on December 11th. With 11 Big Pink Volleyball Teams participating and a huge holly jolly market, it was a great community and family event. They are gearing up for even more activities this spring. The Local has served over 300 meals since opening to the public for lunch service in November, and that's not including the numerous catering events our students have had the opportunity to be involved with outside of usual school hours. The Local is currently revamping its menu for the spring semester and will open more days and service hours to the public very soon. Doggy Daycare has served over 100 dogs since opening to the public in October. We average about 12 dogs per week, with most being repeat customers. Forney ISD Future Ready has added a third student-run business to our CTE programs. Blooms at Forney ISD is composed of our floral design students from Forney and North Forney High School. Students in this program will have the opportunity to earn their Level One Floral Certification while learning the art of design. We've had amazing success with our partnership with Dallas College and the Community Welding and HVAC classes, so much so that we will have additional sections in the spring. Community members have the opportunity to earn their Associate Degree as well as Level One certifications in both welding and HVAC. For the fall semester, we had a total of 598 students enrolled in dual-credit courses at both Forney High and North Forney High. Enrollment has grown from 2020 by 150 students, and we will have over 20-plus students earning their Associate's Degree at the same time as their high school diploma from the class of 2022. North Forney High School hosted our first annual senior seminar event in December. This event was an opportunity for students to receive information regarding college applications, career in industry, mental health, and learn from past North Forney graduates. Forney High will host their senior seminar this spring with a number of topics relating to seniors prior to graduation. We are proud of what we've accomplished over not just the last six months, but the last several years. Thanks to our Strategic Planning Committee this past spring, we're looking forward to the future with the new plan in place and our updated board goals. It has definitely been the most challenging two years we've faced in education, but we persevered and are looking forward to what the future holds for Forney ISD and all of
Happy New Year. Hopefully, the video spoke for itself on how much we've really accomplished this last six months, and we have a great team, and our circles have expanded, so you can see some of the depth of what we've been able to accomplish. So, I just want to see if you guys have any questions about some of the things that we've done over the last six months.
Any questions for Dr. Weber? Thank you for that. Keep up the good work. Moving on then to 7E, Ms. Johnson, once again.
Thank you very much. As an extension of the Forney family, we are extending to the Bright Lights Campaign. You may have already seen this video, but it sure is a nice introduction, so I'm going to play this for you.
My job is to make college easier because students have a lot of Forney. What we've overcome and are still overcoming is a testament to how strong we are as people, as a community, and as a Forney family. Our journeys to get to today were all a little bit different, but none have been easy. We've been through so many sorrows and challenges over the last few years, but we've learned to persevere through those challenges. Through each challenge, we've built character in each of us, and that character creates hope for each of us and our community. We see you. We appreciate you. You are our Forney family, and you are amazing. Those challenges have tried to divide our community, but schools bring people together. Whether it's a Friday night football game, or a band concert, or an open house, or partnering with our businesses and service organizations, coming together creates a sense of community. To rise after the challenges we've faced and are still facing is evidence of the strength that we have as a community. We start each day ready to tackle any new challenges in our way and shine brightly in any darkness that starts to creep in. We use that light to push forward to a hopeful future. The focus is on connection over perfection and giving and asking for grace as we continue to navigate uncharted territory together with our community. Forney ISD prides itself on being a family, and our family will continue to support one another. As we begin a new year, we wanted a simple reminder that shining a little hope and positivity for others goes such a long way in the dark. Let's show the world that our Forney family is persevering through the hard times, using our values to bring each of us even closer together for a shared sense of purpose. We are stronger for the challenges we've faced and prepared for new opportunities tomorrow.
So, that was a wonderful video that was put together by Kristin Sestopol and Juan, and we're so grateful for the vision on that. But the important reminder is that we all see things within our community through our churches, through our organizations that we work with. We see people that are making a difference, that are... We see people that are making a difference, that are shining a light. And so, we are asking our Forney family to help participate in sharing that light across the community. And if you will look behind you, you have a bright yellow sign, and this is just empowering you to go and light someone's lawn, or to go and extend your appreciation for the light that they bring. So, we encourage you to help us participate in this campaign by acknowledging someone who has done something really well that you would like to acknowledge. You can also go online to ourforneyfamily.com and write something. So far, I believe since just kicking this off last week, we've had 200 nominations come through of people just recognizing all kinds of people, from the post office worker to the student in the classroom, to the teachers. I think 50% of the nominations that have come in have all been for staff and for our teachers. So, anyway, it's going to be really fun and an incredible opportunity for us to really reach our community, so thank you for that, and thank you for all you do, and continue to help us grow our Forney family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Cherry, any comments?
You know, Forney family's been something pretty special to us for the last few years, and it's really just about, you know, taking care of each other and supporting each other and being positive through the good times and the challenging times. And so, this is a great opportunity that our teams come up with to really allow our community to participate in this, and lighting the lawns is really the activity that we're going to start with, and we hope to carry this program throughout the spring with maybe some other activities as well. But Board, what we do is challenge you. You can write on those, go stick it in somebody's yard, and if you need more signs, we can get them, don't worry. So, Larry, I think we're going to take one quick photo of the Board with your signs, so if you will grab your sign and then squeeze in the middle.
Thank you, Administration, and thank you for the team that put together that creative new campaign. We look forward to seeing the results of that, how it's already kicked off and inspiring others. Moving on in our agenda then to item number eight, Public Forum. No one signed up to speak to the Board, so move on to the Consent Agenda. At this time, we'll take Consent Agenda A through L. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read each of those to you. You have them before you, Board. We can take action separately or collectively. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to the Board to approve the Consent Agenda as presented collectively.
Mr. Andrews, do I have a second? Ms. Dobbs? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. It is pass. Moving on to item 10, Consideration Possible Approval of Construction Bids. Ms. Kim Morseak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'll actually ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction to come up and speak to you about the construction bids. I think we have four bids to talk about tonight. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you again, Ms. Morseak. Board, hello again.
As Ms. Morseak mentioned, we do have four construction bids to bring to the Board tonight for consideration. Three of them are summer remodel projects, and the fourth one is the Elementary School Number 10 Building Package. I'll start out with Blackburn Elementary School Summer Innovations. This is for the operable wall replacement between the cafeteria and gym, removal of vinyl wall covering, and painting the interior walls and door frames of that campus. As you'll probably recall, the flooring at that campus was replaced very recently due to the flood damage that was experienced over there. So, the total cost of that project is $294,300. Then we have the Henderson Elementary School Summer Innovations 2022. Similarly, the vinyl wall covering removal and painting of the interior walls and door frames, and the replacement of the operable wall between the cafeteria and gym. Henderson also includes a replacement of flooring, similar to what we did at Blackburn and what we've already done at, Chris, well, I'm sorry, Cleveland. The total amount on that project is $783,500. The third project is resurfacing the track at Brown Middle School. That one's pretty straightforward. It's taken up the existing track surfacing material and putting down new track surfacing and striping. The cost of that project is $340,205. And then, as I mentioned, the final project is the building package for Elementary School Number 10. You know, realizing the challenge that the district has in growth, in student enrollment, the Board made a decision to move forward with Elementary School Number 10 with the assistance of Huckabee. We were able to get a building package put together very quickly based on the prototype of the other elementary schools and got bids in. We received a good number of bids in each trade. We're real happy with the turnout, especially in the current climate. It's always good to have a lot of competitive numbers, and what we will do on this one is if the Board awards the contracts, then we'll go ahead and get submittals and shop drawings going with the building package contractors, get the steel ordered, get the HVAC units ordered, some of those long lead time type items, and that way, once the civil package is completed and we can put it out for bid, then once we break ground, we'll be able to move real fast on the building itself. So, the information was provided in your Board packet, I believe, listing out the contractors that are recommended for approval, and then, again, we'll bring the site packages back to the Board once that process is bid out. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have on any of those.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Do I have any questions from the Board? I hear none. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Board, we would recommend these projects, just funding-wise, just as you recall, the first three that he mentioned are going to be from our fast-growth allotment funds and what we've allotted there out of the current budget, and the other is from Elementary 10 would come from current bond funds. And just a reminder, that Elementary Number 10 is actually a complete absorption of an entire elementary school through the savings that we've received in the current bond authority. So, that's pretty exciting, and we are still under budget from what we were projecting even with that. So, again, kudos to Mr. Fisher and the Gallagher team and Kim. Thanks for all your hard work. Daniel, I think is here as well with Huckabee. That was a very, very fast turnaround on that elementary school to be able to get those bids out, so thank you for that, and we'd recommend you approve them as presented.
Board, you've heard the recommendation, Dr. Terry's comments. Do I have a motion? Ms. Dobbs, do I have a second? Mr. Regan? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 11, Consideration Possible Approval of Resolution DFE. Mr. Rick Gere, Chief of Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, and Board Trustees. Just in part of consent tonight was the approval of Policy Update 118. As a result of Policy Update 118, DFE Local actually was driven by a recent TEA Commissioner of Education proposal for decision. And so, the proposal addresses who has the authority to actually accept the resignation of a contract employee. We've provided for your consideration two resolutions. One of them addresses resignation received before the end of the school year, which would be considered a mid-year resignation, and then also, there's another one that would be for those that was tendered at the end of the year, before the penalty-free resignation period. And so, we've named three other, because Dr. Terry doesn't really want to do this, so we've suggested that it would be the Chief of Human Services, the Position of Executive Director of Human Resources, and the Director of Human Resources. So, we're asking the Board to consider these two resolutions with these three positions designated as additional personnel that can actually accept a resignation and to grant them authority to do so. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Any further questions?
And Dr. Terry thanks you for that.
Any further questions from the Board? Dr. Terry, any additional comments?
No, sir. We would recommend that you approve resolution referencing DFE as presented.
Okay. Board, you have it before you. May I have a motion on item 11?
I make a motion to approve the resolutions for DFE as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second? Mr. Andrews, all in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Moving on then to item 12, Consideration Possible Approval of Resolution EHAA. Mr. Gere?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferris. Also in Policy Update 118, EHAA Local provided recommendations to address requirements regarding the Board adoption of human sexuality curriculum materials. The Texas Education Code requires the Board of Trustees to adopt a resolution convening the Local School Health Advisory Committee, better known as the SHAC, for the purpose of making recommendations regarding the curriculum materials for the school district's human sexuality instruction. We have provided a resolution for your consideration. Our goal, if signed, then our goal would be to present the SHAC's recommendation to the Board in the March board meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those.
Any questions of the Board? Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We would recommend tonight approval of Resolution EHAA as presented.
Board, you've heard the explanation and the recommendations from the Administration. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the resolution for EHAA as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. And any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Item 13. At this time, we'll reconvene into closed session. We'll go into closed session in Texas Government Code 551074, and we'll be back hopefully sooner than later. So, thank you for being here with us tonight. We'll call this back into open session. It is now 9:10 PM, and we will move on to item 14, Consideration Possible Approval Regarding Employment of Professional Contract Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to the Board to approve the redification of employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Can I hear none? Moving to item 15, Consideration Possible Approval Regarding Pursuant of Sanctions for Educator Abandonment of Contract. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the Board find that good cause for Isaiah Brown to abandon their contract with Forney ISD and authorize the superintendent to take all necessary steps to report this matter to the State Board for educator certification for further action.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item number 16, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding the Superintendent's Summit of Evaluation and Extension and Modification of Superintendent's Term Contract. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move to amend the superintendent's employment contract as discussed in the closed session, including extending the current contract term and authorize the Board President to negotiate and execute amended contracts as discussed in the closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second? Mr. Andrews, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none, so it is approved. Moving on to item 17, Announcements. Monday, January 17, the district will be closed for a holiday. Tuesday, January 18, remember the groundbreaking for Opportunity Central. More details to come in your inbox, so watch for that. Monday, February 7, be our regular school board meeting. It's now 9:12, and this meeting is called adjourned.